Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We've got a replacement for Scoop today back there, huh? Morning, Reggie, how are you?
Missed you Saturday, the cake was good.
Yeah, well, I was out in knee-deep in other stuff.
You and much of the county.
Yep. Didn't have time for a party. All right, let's see, item number one. We're gonna approve minutes of the August eighth meeting with some corrections. Let's see. Look at the minutes. Page two of the minutes halfway down. It's the one, two, three, four, fifth motion down. It should say, that's the one with Thomas Prince, it should say, uh, minimum of forty hours. And then on page...
Not minimum, just forty hours, just on salary.
Oh, I'm sorry, just forty hours, that's right. And on page four, under the motion for the second one down, under the County Office Building Partial Roof, that should say nine AM, not just nine. And then the motion before the public comment, that motion was by Commissioner Warren and seconded by Commissioner Arnold. So those are the corrections to the minutes. With that, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve with those corrections.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve the minutes for those stated corrections of August eighth. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item number two.
Make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting and open a salary board meeting at nine oh one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the salary board at nine oh one. All favor?
Aye.
So carried. Now to the salary board. All right, item one.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August eighth meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve the minutes of the August eighth meeting, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item number two.
At this time, I'd make a motion to amend the salary of the non-union position of county detective, school resource officer, at a per diem rate of one hundred and sixty dollars per day, not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars per year.
I'll second that.
What was the change in that?
I think it was a, it was, the change was, we had generalized it, yes.
Right.
Yes.
The change is the substitute, allowing them to use a substitute.
Yep. Was the word substitute was in there before?
No.
I don't think so, okay.
No. No, it didn't allow, the original agreement where the, the original agreement did not allow for the substitute. But this does.
Yep. Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried. Have a great day.
Thank you, we'll see what happens.
All right. Item number three.
Motion to eliminate the full-time position, union-eligible position of intake officer, effective at the end of business August twenty-second, per the recommendation of President Judge Lake.
I'll second that.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item three, eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of intake officer, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, item four.
Motion to eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of conference officer, effective August twenty-second, per recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item four, eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of conference officer, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item five.
Motion to eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of conference officer slash court liaison, effective end of business August twenty-second, per the recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item five, eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of conference officer slash court liaison, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item six.
Motion to eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of enforcement officer, effective end of business August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item six, eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of enforcement officer. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Motion to eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of financial enforcement officer, effective end of business August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Warren, to approve item seven, eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of financial enforcement officer. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
All right, item number eight.
Motion to, excuse me, create the full-time, union-eligible position of case intake specialist, eleven forty-eight per hour, grade thirteen with benefits, according to the union contract, effective August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item eight, create the full-time, union-eligible position of case intake specialist. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, item number nine.
Motion to create two full-time, union-eligible positions of enforcement specialist slash court liaison, eleven forty-eight per hour, grade thirteen with benefits, according to the bargaining unit, effective August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, seconded by Commissioner Warren, approve of item number nine, on the agenda, create two full-time, union-eligible positions of enforcement specialist slash court liaison. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, item ten.
Motion to create two full-time, union-eligible positions of establishment specialist slash court liaison, eleven forty-eight per hour, grade thirteen, with benefits, according to the union contract, effective August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Lake.
Second.
Motion by Court Administrator Kathy Holly, signed by Commissioner Warren, approve item ten, create two full-time, union-eligible positions of establishment specialist court liaison. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, any public comment on salary board? Yes.
Just to clarify, the new positions just replace all the ones you eliminated?
Yeah, what it is, is there is, there's a lot of changes in that office. Instead of one person being solely having one job, now they're all cross-trained, to the point where, you know, more people go into the courtroom instead of just one or two people. So everybody's cross-trained, plus with the recent Supreme Court order, the domestic relations files that were in the fiduciary's office will be moving back up to domestic relations. They'll have to maintain those and service those also. So that, there's a whole change in the scope of what people do up there.
Now, do these changes don't reflect changes in their pay? I assume the same people are in the positions that were.
Well, we don't have a lot of people up there. So if you get into the next, when we get back to the commissioners' meeting, you'll see some of the changes there. I do believe that one person, because of the great change from a twelve to a thirteen,
Okay.
they're getting a slight bump with that.
Okay, okay.
But there was no other changes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Can I get a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the salary board and reopen the commissioners' meeting at nine oh eight. I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to close the salary board and return to the commissioners' meeting, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Did you make that change in the job description? Did you send them back down to Brian?
Yes, he has everything.
All right, thank you. All right, now we're back to item number three.
Make a motion to approve item number three, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item three on the agenda, to approve or ratify the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item four.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item four on the agenda, to approve the following seminar requests on the payments, questions or comments? Just so you know, the, you'll see some of our employees taking a defensive driving course. It's not because our employees are bad drivers. It's because if we do that, it gives a discount on our insurance. So, any place we can get a few extra bucks from somebody, we do that. All favor?
Aye.
Item number five.
Make a motion to approve item number five, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item five on the agenda, to ratify and acknowledge the hiring of Jesse Pruitt of Halsted to the open union eligible position of deputy sheriff, effective August thirteenth. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number six.
Make a motion to approve item number six, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to ratify and accept the resignation of Michael Appisardi from position of corrections officer, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item seven on the agenda, to ratify the termination of Angela Vitale from the position of IT specialist administrator, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, item number eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item eight on the agenda, to ratify and acknowledge the hiring of Sidney Warner Montrose to the open union eligible position of civil criminal clerk, effective August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of Sheriff Lance Magic. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, item number nine.
Make a motion to approve item number nine, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item nine on the agenda, acknowledge with regret the resignation of Cameri Ely from the position of director of domestic relations, effective August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lake, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item number ten.
Make a motion to approve item number ten, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item ten on the agenda, acknowledge the transfer of Michelle Jerome from the position of assistant director of domestic relations, the open full-time, non-union position of director of domestic relations, at forty-nine thousand, five hundred, with no schedule increases for two thousand and nineteen, effective August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lake, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carried, item eleven.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item eleven on the agenda, to acknowledge the transfer of Linda Daly from the position of intake officer to the open full-time, union-eligible position of case intake specialist. No change in rate of pay, effective August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lake, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item number twelve. It's still the same, huh?
I'll make a motion to approve item number twelve, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to acknowledge the transfer of Diana Snow from the position of enforcement officer to the open full-time eligible, union eligible position of enforcement specialist court liaison, no change in rate of pay, effective August twenty-third, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lake, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to acknowledge the transfer of Angela Hollerin from the position of conference officer to the open full-time, union-eligible position of establishment specialist court liaison, eleven forty-eight per hour, effective August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, per the recommendation of President Jason Lake, Judge Jason Lake, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
Make a motion to approve item number fourteen, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item fourteen on the agenda, acknowledge with regret the resignation of Terilyn Wickizer from the position of financial officer, enforcement officer, effective August twenty-third, with regret from recommendation of President Judge Jason Lake, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item fifteen on the agenda, approve the hiring of Jerry Fassett Jr. of Montrose, the open union eligible position of part-time corrections officer, per the recommendation of Word and Show, questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item sixteen.
Make a motion to approve item number sixteen, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item sixteen on the agenda, approve the following tax claim, bureau of exoneration request as so stated. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item number seventeen.
Is this supposed to be the, it's not per the recommendation?
No, it shouldn't be that.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seventeen, up to a hundred and eighty dollars per DM.
The last, per the recommendation doesn't need to be on this one. All right, so we got a motion?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item seventeen, to sign the purchase service agreement between Suscano County Services for Children and Youth and Youth House for the term of July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirty, two thousand and nineteen, inclusive, for the following programs only, shelter care at a hundred and eighty dollar per DM. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item eighteen.
Make a motion to approve item number eighteen, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item eighteen, to approve the change order in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, oh seventy-five, with CND waterproofing for the courthouse, corinth plating, cast column top, sill flashing, lower banding, molding, replacement, brick, power washing and sealing and dome coating. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
That's a mouthful. Item nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nineteen, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item nineteen on the agenda, to approve purchase of the Unison Open Elect Voting System from Election IQ Akron, Ohio, for the purchase price of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars, pending legal review and approval by the county solicitor. You're fine with the approval added, both of you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, questions or comments? So you understand what that is, that replaces all our election machines. It replaces the, the auto marks that are out at the polling stations, which are, how old are those now?
Pretty old.
Pretty old. And it replaces the two six-fifties downstairs that we use to count the ballots on election night. This is an entirely different system, it's a regular bicycle, it's like a desktop scanner, replaces the six-fifties. It's pretty impressive and they run real well. So, we also are hoping that even though we have this price on here, there is word that the state, of course, is gonna do funding for all the election areas for equipment because across the state of Pennsylvania, everything is antiquated and outdated. So if funding does come available, we have checked with the Department of State, even though if we move forward with this, the funding comes available, we'll get the reimbursement for it. And the reason why we're moving forward is we've already been researching this for a year with the different companies and with everybody else now in the state scrambling to try and get away from the, basically, you have to move away from the total electronic voting to make sure you have some type of receipt or some type of ballot. So a lot of counties now are gonna have to try and move to what we're doing. And in doing that, it's gonna create, of course, a shortage on equipment, which probably will mean that, you know, supply and demand, you know, the price will go up. So we're gonna try and get in on the front of this so that we don't end up getting a bath in it, so. And this stuff is approved by the Department of State, the election equipment is all approved by the Department of State. So with that all said, any other questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Item number twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty, is listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Yeah, Mr. Mike. Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, approve item twenty, open in a word following the review of the solicitorian, J. Firm Sealed Bids for Suscano County Office Building Partial Roof Replacement.
All in favor?
What?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the first one is from CND Waterproofing. And there's an item one, and there's an item two, so the item one is seventy-seven thousand. And the item two... So the total's seventy-eight, four forty-one. Make sure we're not, something else hidden here.
What's the name of that company?
CND Waterproofing. The next one is from Dunmore Roofing and Supply. And there's a, let's see, what they start on? I think seventy-seven, eight sixty-five. And then they, their second, so they're at seventy-nine, five thirty-three total, it looks like. And the last one is out of DA Nulp in Berlin, New Jersey. And then that one, hey, we got... Eighty-three, nine twenty-seven, their total. Uh, theirs isn't in the same format as the other ones, but it is over eighty-three thousand, so it's not the lowest bid. All right, these will move on to the engineering firm first, then the solicitor, and they will determine if they are correct. And they'll award to the lowest person, which I believe at this point is CND, but it will be confirmed at our next meeting as to what got awarded to. Any public comment? No bane.
Just curious, what the three of you have found occupy your time the last week and a half?
Really?
Yeah, I have no idea what you've been having.
Well...
I have a pretty good idea of what you've been doing.
Yeah, yeah, it's been pretty devastating with the floods and stuff, so. Been extremely busy, so. Anybody got anything else?
Are all the bridges, county bridges, open?
Well, the bridges are open, you just can't get to them, so. We have two that are out in the middle of a field and there's basically on an island. So we're waiting for the water to get down on those two. Right now, we've got about, the number keeps going up every day. We know we have at least probably six hundred thousand dollars worth of damages to the bridge. It'll probably be triple that by the time we're done, so. It'll probably be closer to a couple million dollars by the time we're done with the damages to the county bridges. And of course, there is no insurance for that.
Is there any state money?
Nothing yet. And as my last note, I don't believe the federal has declared for us, so right now, that's a problem too.
So we just need it, basically?
Unless we, we just gotta wait and see what happens, so.
If we meet the thresholds in the state, there will be state money.
Oh, okay.
And hopefully, we'll, the federal will declare and meet those thresholds also.
Is DeBois Street open yet?
DeBois Street is passable, we're telling people only for local traffic and emergency equipment. I did meet with PennDOT, they are subbing out a lot of their work because they just can't handle the volume of work that needs to be done. So there's a couple bridges, like one sixty-seven is an issue down by Diaz's, that bridge is out. It's probably gonna be a year on that one before it's back. So we're looking at alternatives there to see what we can do there. There's, the only other bridge that's, I know right now at this moment is the one at the end of Liberty Park, but you can go around that on Shadowbrook now. Shadowbrook is back open, Liberty Township did, supervisors did an excellent job. Shadowbrook was gone completely. The bridge was there, the water wasn't going into the bridge anymore, it had taken the road out and made a new path. So they do have it back under the bridge and they've got the road rebuilt. So at least now we can get emergency services through there. Steam Hollow Road was closed, we're hoping by the end of the week that one will be opened back up right at the bottom of the new Melford Rod and Gun Club there, or they're working on that, so. A lot of the roads are passable, but they're really beat up and chewed up bad. You know, the shoulders and stuff are really bad and beaten up, so that's a problem. Any other public comment?
Can I make a comment about the disaster recovery center is open today, nine until seven PM? The numbers were over a hundred on Monday, approximately seventy yesterday, and if those numbers continue, we will continue to be open tomorrow. If emergency permits, things like that, if everybody could get it out on social media, if you're out there on social media.
If they come here, you want an emergency permit to go in and clean a creek out? You just gotta come here, DAP's here, they'll write the permit and you can get going.
If there's a need for flooding victims with school needs, back-to-school needs, Interfaith is giving backpacks, sneakers, groceries, things like that, so that nobody goes back to school without new stuff. So Interfaith is in our DRC and over to their building.
We have, there is, and unfortunately, whenever you have a disaster, there's always people that are looking to take advantage. We have had reports of people going door-to-door, saying that they're from the county, they're out doing work for the county, trying to scam people. You know, we need to get out on social media and tell everybody, we are not sending people door-to-door. We don't do that. So if somebody shows up at their door, they need to call somebody, don't give them a check, don't give them money, don't give them anything. Also, you know, we have found, I have found, you know, some red tubs and stuff around town. There's no name on the tub as to who's collecting the money. It just says going for flood relief, I don't know what it's all about. I will tell everybody today that the commissioners have supported Interfaith. Interfaith supports the commissioners and the community. Anywhere that wants to donate or do anything, needs to send the checks to Interfaith. Interfaith has set up a separate account. They have a spreadsheet, so when a person comes in, if they need help, they get so much money for each individual thing. I did talk to the gas companies yesterday. Cabot, Southwestern, Williams, and one more, and... DTE, I'm sorry, thank you. DTE Energy, all of them are gonna donate five grand apiece, so we're gonna get twenty grand into Interfaith right away. Hartford Fair on Saturday is donating a dollar from every ticket to go to Interfaith to help people, so. You know, so if you know people that wanna donate, that's where they need to send their money, to Interfaith. Because it will go directly to the victims of the flood. And they've guaranteed us that that money will not leave this county, it will be for Suscano County residents and only flood people. So if somebody comes in off the top of a mountain and says, "Oh, you know, I need this, I need that", they're gonna verify and make sure that somebody's not trying to scam them, because people will scam.
How long is the donation, how long are the donations gonna be? How long do we have to make a donation specifically for, like flood relief?
It'll be, it'll be open for quite a while, because the amount of devastate... The problem that she has is, you know, like right now, she can give up to two hundred and fifty dollars for a furnace. Well, you and I both know, a furnace costs a heck of a lot more than two hundred and fifty bucks. So the more money she gets in, the more she'll be able to go back to all those people and increase the amount of money she's giving them. So she has, basically, if she has a person coming in, there's a needs form, they fill it out, she knows what they need, and then she can go back if more funds become available so that she can take and send more money to those people to help them. So we need to get as much as we can and keep it moving as long as we can to try and help these people out.
One more question, did you get any feedback from any of the schools regarding their transportation with the road closings and bridges and stuff?
We have not gotten anything yet. I know we're like right around the corner for school to start, so I know they're all scrambling, trying to figure out. We do have on our website, we get daily updates from PennDOT as for road closures. So that is on our website, so people can look at, and the schools have that also.
That was at Oakley's Board Meeting, they did say they were gonna have to reroute some buses.
Right.
I mean, even if the roads are open, the bridges might not be able to accommodate a bus full of kids anymore.
Right.
Wait when it starts changing.
Some of the dirt roads that they may have been used to run a seventy-passenger bus on, they may have to ascend a sixteen-passenger bus on. You know, just because the roads, there's no shoulders and there's big huge ditches and, you know, a lot of the roads eaten away, so.
Are all of our county schools open the same day, do they all open?
No, I think...
Little Rouge opens a week later, after Labor Day.
Right.
Do they, okay, that's what I was told yesterday.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
There's a lot of activity at Blue Ridge right now, I wonder if they're just, I don't know what they're doing.
They're doing, well, they're doing some work up there, I know that. So it will take, you know, some of the... So it will take, you know, some of the stuff, PennDOT's already set some of these bridges. It's going to be a year before they get fixed. Time they get, get them out to bid, they get engineered, they get specked. You know, we're already into, listen, we're all, we're knocking on September. We only got a month, a month and a half of bill left and we're going to be pushing snow again. And let's hope we don't have as much snow as we had rain this summer. Right, Jack?
That's for sure.
I would like to say on behalf of a resident of New Melford Township that I was very impressed with how quickly they got out and got the roads at least passable again so that where the road was completely eaten away by water erosion, at least you could drive through.
Yeah. And you're absolutely right. I mean, the townships and everybody has worked very hard. Hats off to PennDOT. You know, they really worked hard. We had crews out on PennDOT on DeBois Street Saturday and Sunday work, which, you know, is rare. And, you know, that section alone, which was probably about, I want to say maybe 500 feet long, was the worst section of it. We actually, it got to the point where we had to, they didn't have enough resources. So they had called us and we had sent a tree company out because they needed somebody that had a bar on a chain over 40 inches to cut trees and, because the trees are that big. And so we sent a guy out to cut. And then Saturday and Sunday, we had, thanks to RHL, we had a logging truck out there on Saturday and Sunday. They took over 50 loads of trees out of that 500-foot section. And just to clean that road so they get one lane of road back into it. So our immediate concern is fire and rescue and ambulance, making sure the roads are open enough to get them out there. That is why we have a concern right now with 167 South. United is a backup for Hot Bottom. And, you know, if Hot Bottom has an issue for United to get there, they'd have to go down the Shop and Creek if they could even get a truck down that. By the time they get there, whatever the disaster was or incident was, it'd be well over by the time they could get there. So we need to try and see what we can do to move that along. So... So there is a lot of work to be done. Everybody's doing a great job. Hats off to all the township supervisors, municipalities, all the workers, PennDOT people. They've all done a great job.
Our 911 people.
Our 911 people, you know, all our people, our ELC Center, they've all, they've all done good work. So... Anything else?
Amen to what you just said.
Reggie, you got any questions, Reggie?
No.
All right. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, signed by Commissioner Arnold, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.